You may be seated. Have a real call, members.
Mr. Jeter, District One. Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is to approve the agenda. We have one thing to change, Ms. Orange. You go ahead and...
We need to remove item number 10. We'll take that up at a later date.
All right. Anything else?
That's the only change I have.
All right. With that, we need to approve the agenda as a man. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from June the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If you had a chance to look at it, hope you have. We need a motion to approve the minutes that's presented to you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is citizen's expression period. And I'll read this short statement. We have one person signed up to speak. Ms. Peggy Tyrus is here, so we will read the statement first, and we'll vouch up, please. And this statement is, "Citizen's expression period is upon the meeting. Anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state where you're from, and state your name and where you're from in the county and/or board organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. With the fact that you take turns and speak your business, it actually will be considered after we close this expression." So with that, Ms. Peggy. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's usually good morning, but it's afternoon.
Oh, no, it's different, isn't it? My name is Katie Thompson. I'm from Snowflake Road, and I want to thank Journey and Frida for calling and reminding us of the change. And it's good to see you all again. And I guess, I guess my biggest complaint today is the bushes. I mean, the, I mean, we've got curds, horseshoe curds, and nothing done. And what about maybe the contractors treat people? I know they cut some trees for my sister down in Rose Creek. And so if we could get on the list of the contractor, you know, to talk about VDOT not having workers to get on the list, is that... But that list...
I know they, when they work in, in your area, Marshall, Bush hog, it is on the upper end or something. I, I saw one, what? Yeah. They had the bush hog deal, the reach thing, but it wasn't contractors, though. It was estate.
Is it VDOT?
Yeah, it's actually VDOT. I'm pretty sure.
Uh-huh.
But they, they, they did tell me, I don't know, a couple of months ago, I guess, that they were, I thought they were going to contract it, but maybe they, I think they've got at least one or two of those tractors with the bush hog on the reach, you know, but of course that, it, he asked me which roads, you know, it's all of them, you know, and so I don't, I don't know their schedule yet, but hopefully they'll, we can let them know again.
Okay. Well, is VDOT, are there any money to get more workers or?
About, I don't know.
We don't, we wouldn't know either.
They, they, they did hire or replace one, is what they told me. He's a, he was like a supervisor's job at Fort Blackmore. So there was one retired, and then they'd been one guy that had been sort of doing two different jobs, the way I understand it. And they did hire at least one. So maybe, maybe that's helping some. I don't know.
Okay. And grading, it's been a while since we've had grade work on Snowflake Road because in certain sections of the road, there's grass growing in the middle of the road, so that tells you that it's been a while. Gravel, I guess without a question. And I would like to, and the potholes, they're getting deeper. We're, with it dry, it's dusty. If we get a little bit of rain, it's muddy. Anybody that's been on a dirt road, and I sympathize with everybody that live on a dirt road. If I win the lottery, I'm going to pay Snowflake Road.
I hope you win.
I know a lot of folks that live near that.
Yeah.
When the, we, we just need help. I mean, well, you know, you all know, anybody that's been on the dirt road, and I've had people to say to me, "Well, why? Or you, you live on a paved road." Well, the farm and my mom lives on that dirt road, and so have to travel it often, about every day. And the turkey kill board, I'd like for him to get money moved from primary roads to secondary roads that don't need nothing done. I mean, that is in good shape. And I want to thank you all, and we'll see you next month.
Okay. I'll get to see. Do you know if they've done anything at where Laura lives?
No. Oh, and I was going to say, there's one more, there's a ditch that you've got to stop to go across it, and then you better want, you might break your neck because you, you know, it does you that way. And so ditches and bushes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Laura?
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Old habits are hard to break.
Had to edit my speech here to say good afternoon. But good afternoon. I want to say first that I appreciate this board and those who serve the public. Your hard work does not go unnoticed. My name is Kevin Helms, and I am a candidate for treasurer's office in the election this November. As I've traveled this county, attending various community meetings and town council meetings in Duffield, Nicholsville, Gay City, Weber City, I've been listening to the residents and their concerns and worries. Just want to say briefly while I'm running, I've lived here almost my entire life. I've raised a family here, been a small business owner in Scott County for over twenty years. I want to see Scott County win with a focus on common goals. That's moving forward to be financially stronger and improve the quality of life for people who live here. When we work together, we can accomplish this. The focus of my campaign has been on investing, or rather, the lack of investing, as I have discovered. For example, Wise County has earned over one million dollars since July first in interest alone. We are on track to earn less than two thousand dollars. I read over the published budget in the Scott County, Virginia Star recently and noticed we had only budgeted ten thousand dollars for interest earnings. Unfortunately, we will not even come close to meeting that goal. I do commend the treasurer in Wise County for her commitment and vision, and I will give that same level of commitment to the people of Scott County if I'm elected. I want to work with this board to also study the possibility of changing our tax deadline or move to twice a year billing. November is a very difficult time for people with increased heating bills and the holidays with Thanksgiving and Christmas just around the corner. Many counties already do this, but only if it helps the people of Scott County. Then I will work very hard to try to help make that happen. This is the type of candidate I am, the type of person I am. I have ideas, and I have drive to make things happen. I appreciate your time this afternoon. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? If not, we will come out of citizen's expression, and we voiced some thoughts about you, Ms. Peggy, about the goings on with the roads, and it's, and I have actually met with the Secretary of Transportation in Richmond, and I don't know what it would take to get money moved from the primary roads to secondary. It's, it would be hard to do. They put money in those pots, and I guess I kind of showed myself a little bit the way I handled that, but I felt like, and I mentioned the road, you know, Fort Blackmore, they, they chipped it up and repaved it. I didn't think it needed it. But that's my thoughts, and they were saying like preventive maintenance, that kind of stuff, and I get it. But they don't ask us about anything they do when it comes to the, the money they spend. Whereas the curve at the wide little gap or the bridge from Weber City or the bridge across down to Spears Ferry, I mean, they do it, and right now, a road on, on South sixty-five is stopped, they're putting a bridge in down there. So they don't, I mean, we, we do have some influence on some of the stuff we can, local people, we can email them and talk to them, and had one thing there up to Allen Sunker this week. I believe we'll get some results on it, on some stuff needs to be done. But hopefully, you know, your, your votes will be heard eventually to where they can get something done with that road. But it's an issue, two hundred and fifty miles of unpaid roads. It's going to be issues everywhere. With the brush cut along the roads, actually, some of the roads I go to, after where your brother lives, I don't know, I mean, I feel like it's, it's hanging three feet over the pavement.
Yeah, I remember you used to say that it was cow hat.
Yeah. But it's growing up. If you meet somebody, you're going to swerve them automatically against what they are, and it's going to probably damage your car. So I don't know. It's an issue on every road. And I, I know yours, you know, and, well, like Allen said here one time, the most important road to people is one they use. The one, the most important to me is the one I use, I guess. That's a lot to that. So hopefully, something will come. Anything else here from any of you folks? Kevin, thank you for coming, and, you know, we, it's a work in progress, and we'll see what happens in November. Appreciate you coming and expressing your thoughts about the future of the county. All right. Anything else? All right. Next item is a public hearing pursuant to the required section fifteen point two dash eighteen hundred, Code of Virginia, to consider easement, access easement for ingress egress across real property on Scott County on Greens Chapel Lane in Dugannon, Virginia. Tax map number twenty-four A six for the use and benefit of tax map number twenty-four A five owned by Jennifer and David White, which has a special use permit for a campground, also known as the Devil's Ford Campground. So do we have, is David, the owner, is he?
It's just an easement.
Just an easement, okay. And so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone needing to speak? Anyone? I guess during this part, Brenda Mead was going to be here, and she sent a couple of questions she had to be asked of the board, was why can't the access, why can't the access be across their own property? That was one question. Question two is what happens to the easement if the property is sold? That was two questions she had. She couldn't be here, and she wanted an answer to those, and I don't know the answer. Maybe her attorney does. Do you know, Sally, what happens if easement is, if the property is sold? We'll actually get that one first.
I think it would transfer.
It will transfer?
Yeah. Just whoever the new one there is.
All right. And the other question is why can't, and which Jennifer's here now, says why can't the access be across their own property? You want to address that?
Sure. Because the property is landlocked. We don't own the connecting property on any side. It's one hundred percent landlocked. Just because my brother owns the property beside of it, still not mine. And you can't get to the property from there, if possible, unless we crawl over a fence and slide down a bank.
I had a discussion before the meeting with Ms. White about getting a service system in there. I was hoping they, you all could do that without that property, you know, the property county owns, but you said you cannot. You, you...
No. The engineer said we needed a sand system.
Yeah. And you can't do it on your own property? Has to be done, include that property to make that happen, is that correct?
We can do it on our property, but then you can't park an RV on top of it. And it takes up, my understanding, a huge space. So that's why we asked to use the county property, was to have the sand.
I was thinking that's the way it was, but I couldn't remember exactly. But anyway, those two questions are, was, she couldn't be here, and then one of those questions asked, and so that's why I did it.
Yeah. One hundred percent landlocked.
And that's what this easement is for? It's just for travel?
It is. We had to actually put the fancy outhouse in the barn lot, so we're going to have to have access to it as far as pumping and that kind of stuff. And obviously, we have access to it, but we need the easement so we don't have to continually answer for driving over the property.
I think it should happen. This is what the board already signed, but I think it should happen. Anyone else, anyone else needing to speak? Anyway, with that, we will come out of the public hearing. Any discussion here? And, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I recommend this. That campground is needed, and I was hoping that we could have worked it out where they could, we could lease that property to them. It would have been, it's an asset that's needed. It's a, you know, people wanting to go to Devil's Bathtub need a place to camp, and boy, there's primitive campers that can park a camper. So anyway, your thoughts here before we put it to a vote. All right. We entertain a motion to approve this easement. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we do the easement.
Okay.
Give them access to the property.
All right. Ms. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. That's her second. Any other discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So you nailed us, and your easement will be granted. All righty. Next item is item eight, housing authority documents. Ms. Orange.
You have a couple of documents on your tablet regarding the housing authority. The first is a memorandum of understanding that is between the housing authority and the county, and basically, it's for completion of environmental reviews for any HUD-funded properties. From reading over the request, it looks like they're going to be doing some enhancements to the apartments that are in Duffield, about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This would, this MOU is just for environmental review purposes for the NEPA and anything related to HUD.
All righty. Thank you, ma'am. All right. We'll need to entertain a motion to approve this, these documents for the housing authority. Do we have a motion?
Do you want to do them separate or together?
Separate, I guess.
Wait, wait, wait. You could do them all again. Okay. Well, then the second one, it's also on your tablet, and it is notice of finding of no significant impact and notice of intent to request release of funds. This is the document that has the two eighty-five, eight ninety-nine listed under request for release of funds. This is also for the same project in relation to environmental reviews and the upgrades to their section A, housing.
All right. So we can do them together, and so we'll need a motion to approve both of those. Do we have someone to do that, please?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving right along. Next item is investment resolution, and so, Ms. Orange, if you would, if you have that chance to look at that note, but go ahead, you can take the lead on that.
You have a small resolution that's on your tablet for investment purposes. It says, "Whereas the Scott County Board of Supervisors requests that the Scott County Treasurer invest county funds in a safe, secure manner, and whereas the Scott County Administrator is to work in partnership with the Scott County Treasurer on investments, and now therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to sign any necessary investment documents." We have, myself and the treasurer, has met with a local bank that she set up a meeting with that we are going to look at doing some investments for the county to try to earn some interest on the county funds. And this would just authorize me to sign any documents to go forward with that.
Next item, we need to invest our money, and we, very, very quickly do that, so. All right. Any other discussion? If not, we entertain a motion to authorize our county administrator to sign as necessary investment, investment documents. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who did?
Me.
Ms. Addington, second. I still want to call you Ms. Prueby.
Okay.
About time I leave here. You'll be, you know, I have it down pat, but anyway. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Our next item is item, we skipped an item ten. We amended that out of the agenda, so item eleven, Ms. Vickers, on bookkeeping, if you would, please.
Please accept, come up, Attorney's DCJS, victim witness grant program, year three, grant number two four dash oh one one five zero VW twenty, with the established budget code two two one five seven, two 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 zero five.
All right. Need a motion to accept the grant set described by Ms. Vickers. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All right. Ms. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is appointments, and you will do that, Frida, because Tina's not here.
We, we have one open appointment, and that is for the comprehensive policy management team. We need a private provider in that spot. I think Tina sent you out some additional information about that, and we do not have any applications at this time.
Do we have any nominations for that, for that? Do we have anybody interested? All right. If not, we can table it and hopefully get somebody interested by the August meeting. Next item is the county attorney items. Ms. Peggy. If I have any questions for our county attorney. All right. Moving right along. We record the meeting. Time wise.
Don't hold your breath.
Moving right along. All right. Next item is our claims. You gotta have a little fun up here. You know, you get bored sitting here doing government stuff, and you just gotta have your life almost all up, you don't you, Brad? All right. There are claims. If you would, Ms. Orange.
Okay. So you know that we went live on the Munis financial side July first. So your claims are going to look a little different. It's going to be a little bit before we can get what you're used to with the treasurer's accountability report, because we've got things in the old system and the new system working hand in hand right now. But on the back of this green sheet, you do have your five thousand list. If you don't like the looks of this, we can plug it into the Excel spreadsheet, but this comes straight from the Munis system. So all of these listed are the ones that were over five thousand. Zetron at the bottom, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, that will be reimbursed to the county from the loan proceeds. So that will be coming back, so don't anybody panic on that big amount. But things that we've had this month have just been normal beginning of the year transactions. Duffield Fire and Rescue and Dugannon Fire Department, they, all those departments have their insurances that come due in July and August, so that's why they've requested, you know, part of their fiscal year twenty-four allocations. Land air, that was for a twenty-foot addition to the Clinch Mountain Tower. That'll also be reimbursed to the county. The regional library, planning district one, the health department, all of those things are first quarter allocations. And then tobacco region revitalization, fifty thousand dollars. Of course, that's payback for the mountaintop timber situation. We have one more of those. So July twenty-four will be our last repayment for that, that amount. That was two fifty total. VACOR, workers comp and insurance, one twenty-two, nine sixty-one, eighty-one, and then the Zetron, six hundred and twenty-three thousand. So you had thirteen invoices that totaled nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, three forty-two, sixty-six. And if you look on the front sheet, total claims that you will need to approve is one million, seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
If I had any questions about any of the bills to be paid? The fact we entertain a motion to pay the bills, do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Herron, second. Any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Misalainous, Ms. Orange.
I don't have any misalainous.
On, on this, do you think it'd be good to still have the comparison chart?
We will, once we're able to, to get your total, and we'll do the comparison chart. Yeah, we'll continue that. It's good.
The bar graph you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, it'll take us a couple of months to get everything.
For some, I think that's pretty straightforward.
Well, this also gives you an invoice description. Whereas before, you really didn't have that. You know, it's just me telling you what they were, but this will give you an idea. This shows what we've typed into the system. So to me, this is a little more detailed than the Excel, but it'll take us a little bit to get the other going. But yeah, we'll be back. We should have roughly around six million right now after these claims, just as a, as a number.
Quick question. Does the school system, will they be able to, will they be able to see this like we're seeing this now with their accounts as well?
They're in the same system.
Okay. Thank you. Doing a good job, Frida, managing. Appreciate the money.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have, since I've been here with Frida and with Kathy, she was here too. We've been very blessed to have people that accounting stuff knows how to do this. Because it gets about my pay grade real quick, and so they complete it in layman terms.
You mean, our three hundred dollars?
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
All right. I'm, I'm with you. But we are blessed to have the people we have, and I envy all of y'all doing a good job with this. You do. And the school system too depends on our accounting people to do the work for them too. So they, they're not just doing the county, county employees, they do the, the school system too. And so it's a, it's a lot of work that the county does for the school system. So it is, and we try to pay you back by bragging on your son. Good heavens, I don't know, but can't do a lot, but we do okay. All right. Anything else? Good discussion, though. Next item reports. Dr. France Recreation is here, so it's going to take a couple hours.
I may switch it up on you. Y'all are a lot of...
Yeah, well, the Darrell's not here, so it's just, you know.
That's the, that's the, that's the X factor. You're right.
Yeah, we not letting them come back. We're letting them go back to wherever they're sent.
Good afternoon, everybody. I was joking. I'll be short and sweet as usual, so y'all get it.
Do what you...
Oh, no, no. Keep Memorial Park, now I say it's in great shape. We've done a lot of projects there last few years. The seniors in the NARA does a great job, keeping that park looking great. Every time I go by there, it's, it's always a great show of people doing it, so. Duffield Community Park, I talked to y'all a little bit about that. We recently completed quite a few projects there. I want to thank Scott Hand Public Works and Maintenance Randall and Anthony. And also Rycow, they've done a lot of work there, especially on the softball, baseball field area. It needed some work, it needed some help, and it's getting there. It looks really good. It's, it looks as good as our dog has in recent memory, so those two areas are looking great. On the rec side right now, we have about a week left in our summer tennis and junior golf programs. We've had a really good turnout, but especially, and I'll show you here in just a minute, the junior golf program probably has the highest turnout maybe ever, or at least in recent memory, huge turnout in the junior golf. I do want to thank my tennis and golf instructors. I have some people help me with that, some high school kids and some college kids. They're fantastic. Tons of parents come up to me and compliment them on their patience, on their knowledge, on how they are with the kids. I have a really good group of kids that help me with the kids, so I couldn't do it without them. And I'll have a show you and talk to you about some of our summer programs. So the summer tennis, we do it every Tuesday and Thursday morning down at Webber City Elementary School. I want to thank Webber City Elementary School and schools because they allow us, they, ever since we started this program, they allow us to use those facilities in the summer. So I do want to thank them, they're great to work with. There we are, we have three different classes. It goes from like nine to 12, but there's three different classes every Tuesday, Thursday. And we have some different nets for the different ages and skill levels. There's a different compression ball, so that's why that ball's yellow and red. But we have off, we have ages five to high school age, so there's just some of the stuff we do. They are playing a little game we call snake, and they love that. It is working with footwork, but it's just fun, more naked and more prize, so that's all they want to play snake for 30 minutes if I play them. There's some of the kids there, there's a, I think that's my second group, one of our courts. We have different courts and different ages and skill levels. There we are, working on the ladder. That's how we always start off and warm up with the ladder. That's how we work on our footwork and agilities and just athleticism there. We always get warmed up with the ladder. Like there I am tossing, that's actually the sponge balls, that's with my little kids, that's my five and six-year-olds there. Let's see, there's a few more. There we are, working on serves. There's a picture of Tim doing his serve there, he's got way up in the air, but, but we do that every summer. Now, here's the junior golf, you can see now, I have two classes, that's just one class. That's probably 15, 16 kids in one class, that's a lot in that group. So we do that every Wednesday morning for about five weeks at the golf course. Y'all can see them there hitting balls, but we have a really good turnout this year for our junior golf, the biggest item that I can remember. I wish I'd have got started at an age of golf. I didn't get started until I was, had a lot worse about habits. These kids are getting a good start. I mean, they're learning the basics. We did different stuff, like some days it's head club, some days it's up, downhill lies, uphill lies. We'll work on pitching and chipping. So there's different skills each week we kind of work on. That was up there our first league. Let's see, there's a good shot of them in action. Hit a lot of golf balls everywhere. Of course, they like to run and go get the ball, but.
Sure.
Yeah, I would say, yeah. There's always a couple that are really energetic, like, hey, go get that far, when they take off line, you know. There we are, I think that's today we're working on our chip and pitching around the green. But it's a, it's a good start for being, I'm glad we're able to provide that. That's a, that's a cool thing to get kids started at a young age of golf. It's a lifelong sport. Tennis is too, something you can play your entire life. I always joke with kids and say, you know, I played football, loved it, but I don't call my buddies up and say, hey, let's put the hell in some, play football. We both play some, yeah, we don't, we don't hit each other and tackle each other. That was actually today, that was, today was, we're working on putting, so you can see how many kids, that's just one class we have too. That's us there, and you get some pretty views of the course too up there. Now they are working on putting today. That might be, I don't know if these kind of quick, sorry. You get some pretty, that's the last thing to tell, I mean, it's a pretty view, but I wasn't trying to get that, I was just trying to get a picture of the kids. So that was actually, that was actually this morning.
Wow. That was today?
That was today, this morning, yeah, we had a class this morning, so. Let's see, all right, so now, and the last thing I'll talk about on the, the rec department side, I usually never bring up the revenue that much on it, but we have had a good year as far as our turnout for basketball, volleyball, tennis and golf. That's our highest revenue total this past year since 2015. Yeah. And that's all just due to, I have a lot of help, you know, I'm, I'm the one man rec department, but I have a lot of great coaches, great parents, great kids in the community that help me with these programs, so. Down the golf course side, more good news. I know I've been talking about the revenue, it's been up, up, up. This past year was our highest revenue total since 2011, so we had a really good year. Lots of memberships, lots of turnout for all our leagues and tournaments. Watched some new players. I know yesterday was a Monday, I come here at times, Monday sometimes it'd be slow, Monday, we were slammed yesterday, just people just golfing. Today they're having a, there's a group that travels around, they're playing the scramble up there today. I mean, just, it's really took off and we're, we're really pleased with that. And the course, I'll talk about it, it's in great shape right now. I've been working with Scott Gerald with the extension office a lot, I keep praising him, but he deserves it. He's given us a lot of insight, a lot of tools and resources to improve course conditions. And, you know, customers are always saying, oh, the course is the best shape it's ever been, but I mean, they say it all the time, but I really think it really is each time they say that. More than one person has even said, they play, you know, Northeast Tennessee, Southwest Virginia, they said, you know, our greens are as good as, you gotta go to Virginia to get anywhere close to ours. And that's high praise, because that's like exclusive, that's, I mean, we're a nine-hole public course, that's a very exclusive course, so. We've heard that from numerous people that said, hey, I've been playing, you know, all through here, and your, your all greens are as good as anybody besides the Virginians, so that, that's, that's high praise. But what we did with Scott, and I'll show you kind of a project we did. As far as I know, I know since I've been there, but I don't think we ever really did what you call an overseeding program. And we really did it because our fairways, we don't have water or fairways, so sometimes, you know, you're always gambling with weather, you know, was it gonna be worth the investment with putting that amount of seed, that amount of money out there, so we never done it, but we talked to Scott and we borrowed a cedar from the Soil and Water Conservation District and we got a specific blend of grass seed that was very expensive, it was very tailored to low turf mowing conditions, turf, you know, fields, athletic fields, golf, golf courses. So we did this about, I think it was last, last fall. And that's just kind of the starting point of it. You can kind of see the little trench dug, and that's just the grass sprouting in the middle. And so we were just happy, hey, the grass came out, you know, because like I said, we're at the mercy of the weather. And then I'll kind of go through some kind of progress of before and after. So there's number one fairway, after we did it, you can kind of see the lines and kind of see the grass starting to sprout and come through there. That's a, you know, it's patchy, it looks rough, it's not real pretty right there. There's kind of a closer picture, you can kind of see it really starting to come in, in the rows, kind of, that's, that's a, it's a riot in the fescue blend, but it's made for, for golf courses and athletic fields. There's another picture, number one, probably like about this time last summer, you can kind of see where, you know, we don't have water, it gets dry and patchy sometimes, we lose some grass in some certain high-traffic areas. And that's a picture last fall, of course, the fairway still looks pretty, but you can kind of see the grass is dormant, and then it starts getting prettier here. So there's stuff coming in, you can kind of see a fairway, that's number eight. You can see the lines and the mowing and the grass is starting to get lush and full. There's number nine, that's just a pretty picture, or flag and green, that's the green and the view there, that's just a pretty picture, but. So there you start seeing, there's from the hole, but you can see number seven fairway, number eight fairway, nine. You can start seeing that grass paying off and that work we did paying off. And then there is kind of, here's where you start seeing, that's number seven, I mean, it's lush, it's as full as it's ever been. A lot of that too also is that recent, we kind of switched it up, and I talked about before, we did a different fairway mower style, and that's made a big difference there with our course, probably as much as anything. There's number six, that was probably early this spring, and here's my fairway, there's number six right before one of our tournaments in the spring. So a big difference from the before and after. Now it's getting hot, so it could be two weeks and it gets dry and patchy again, but.
How, every year after month?
Every, I mean, every day.
Every day?
Yeah. We don't mow fairways every day. In, when it's, after we fertilize and probably in April and May, we're probably mowing fairways three to four times a week. The greens get mowed five, maybe three to five to seven times a week, it just depends on growing conditions and the weather. And then of course, we're, I mean, we're, you know, every day I'll probably mow something when I get back up every day. Something's always needed mowed or we need it, but we're mowing, we mow every day up there. But I think that's all, but that, that's probably my fairway, and that was a really good picture of number six before it turned into hot. It's a, it makes a difference, you know, people that come up there and see it for the first time, you want it to be perfect for them, maybe you can, you know, we always can, but the better it looks, the more the luck with our comeback, so. Like I said, we got a lot of play, a lot of members. We're on a good path right now, I think things are definitely on the up and up there, so. And like I said, I do want to thank Scott. Scott has been a great resource, I know I talk about him, but he's sharp, he's smart. He's actually, I think he's working with Virginia Tech on this, this whole overseeding program. He's tracking it and keeping up, and it's like a project, he's talking to people, corresponding with Virginia Tech with their people, so. He's actually, there's a conference, I think in November, we're gonna go to, but he's gonna make a trade, get a few of these guys to come. He's like, I want them to see this course, they're used to seeing, you know, flat, 18-hole, water everywhere. He's like, he said, I really want them to see what y'all done with the nine-hole course, you know, the resources you have. He said, it's, he said, I think it would really impress them, so. And then lastly, the rental room is staying booked up. I think last time I checked, we got 11 rentals or events to the end, just at the end of the month from now, so next month, I know every weekend's booked, so it's staying, and that's helping with revenue as well, obviously, so. We're busy, and that's a good thing, though. Busy's good, so. We've had, we've had a really, really good year, so. I want to thank my staff, they've done a great job as far as, I mean, just mowing every day, mowing all the time, so. A lot of mowing, but that's all I've got today. If y'all got any questions or.
Something you mentioned there about Scott Gerald. I was at David Mann's farm, been a month ago this now, and he helps him a lot, I didn't realize what they do. He had work boots on, he'd been out there, and he was telling me about needing how to, need salt for magnesium, all the stuff that he needed for that, and I didn't realize how to gauge, he walked with the farmers to do that, and so I hope the farmers know that he's available to do that, and I mean, I was, I was shocked at some of the stuff that he was telling him. At the Virginia Tech, he does all of that, and they, he works through them and helping him too, so it's important, and I hope the farmers realize you got that service, and he's, he's good at it.
Scott's, he's a tremendous resource and asset, and I've even, you know, sing his praises to like the, the football coach, you know, the athlete, the people that take care of athletic fields at the schools, I was like, hey guys, get Scott, that's what he's here for, and he knows.
He knows it.
He knows it, and he loves it, that's the thing, Scott loves it, you know. I feel like we do buy his time, but sometimes I'm like, hey Scott, we got something here, come check out, he loves it, that's his, he's right in his wheelhouse. He, he, he's in his wheelhouse, you know, because there will be sometimes something comes up on the green that, I'm like, well, we think that's that, hey Scott, what do you think, or I'll send him a picture. There's even a time I send a picture of an insect or a bug, just to make sure, hey, is this something okay and not a, you know, a pest, and he's always, I mean, Scott's, Scott's a.
Blessed to have him.
Yeah, we really are. He's, and I think, you know, he'll work with anybody, I mean, farmers, you know, the schools, field, anybody has a.
I remember not too long after I got back from Vanderbilt, and of course my trees were needing, you know, pruned and things like that, and we had Scott out, and Scott brought his tools. He did have done 90% of the work, you know, the first time around, so, but really, you know, to pick his brain, he's very sharp about, you know, all of these things, and we're blessed to really have him.
We really are, yeah. And even our fertilizing, like we, we've started doing soil testing and doing different blends of fertilizer, that's made a difference, just, there's a lot of science that we're starting to utilize, and really that created Scott kind of getting us on that path, the, I mean, the results kind of speak for themselves, but that's, that's all of, you know, using, using some modern tools and methods to improve things, so.
Eric, I just want to mention, the highest revenue since 2011, that's saying a lot. What you've described, you know, the manicure and of the golf course and these young people you're bringing in.
Right.
That, those two things are contributing a lot to that revenue, a lot more coming back on.
Oh, yeah, there, we've got a lot of the, when I say younger golfers, we got the, you know, the college age guys and girls. Well, Sarah, who's one of my, Sarah Arnold's one of my main helpers for tennis and golf, she did buy golf and tennis. She was eight, nine years old, you know. Chance Taylor, who has just declared, I think, pro as a golfer, he came through our golf program, so. It is cyclical, you're right, it, it, it feeds back into itself for sure, so.
That's great, you're doing a good job, yeah.
Thank you.
I think it was a good presentation, and I'm very impressed you've taken pictures this morning for your presentation. I'm impressed how busy you've been today. I didn't do anything.
Busy's good, busy, it, it goes, the summers, even though they're really busy, the summers fly, I mean, it, it's a blink between tennis and golf, and then the golf course and other things, the, the summers absolutely fly by, so.
Are you doing another tennis, or is it just the beginning of summer, are you doing?
We, we started usually about middle of June, it runs, we got until next week, we got about five weeks.
Five weeks, okay.
Yeah. And now, here's what a lot of adults realize, that last class is 13 and up. It's not just for high schoolers. We've had adults do it. Now, I haven't had them in a while, but anybody wants to come learn tennis, sign up next year, we'll teach you tennis, so. We used to have a few adults do it, but just over the years, it's become more of kind of the high school teams class, but, yeah, it says 13 and up, that's, there's all in.
You might throw a pickleball in there too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know.
They did a pickleball.
We kind of tried the pickleball thing, and there's people, it, the, I just don't know, but there's, I don't know if there's enough population maybe to, we, we tried it, we kind of didn't have the best turnout, I hate to say.
It's just getting here, hope.
It's start, it's starting, yeah. And now people do use our, the courts up at the golf course, you can crack them, and I noticed the nets have been cracked now, that's fine. You can kind of make very, well, pretty easily a makeshift pickleball court. Really all you need is one piece of tape, and then your, the service lines are like within an inch or two, I mean, you can basically play pickleball at tennis, it's not perfect, but, and people do that. We have a lot of people playing pickleball there, so. Kind of a makeshift court, but it, it works, it's not, it's not as off as we think it is, so.
Awesome.
But, yeah, we're staying busy.
Busy's good, so, that's good.
And I appreciate you all, I said, I work with the Free, I work with the board, work with the Bill of Public Works, I mean, it takes a, it takes, it takes everybody, it takes a team, and everybody's been great to work with, so I appreciate it.
Doing a great job, I appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Tori, isn't Ms. Pam is here, so.
I'll let you go. I gotta go.
It's okay.
38 minutes and 74 seconds. So, good afternoon, strange to be here at an afternoon, I'm glad to be here today. So I'm going to start off with, I know you are familiar with the Virginia 250 folks. We've been working hard, I don't think anybody could be any bit more, better suited for chairing that committee than Jeff Arrington. We had a meeting last night, he is a taskmaster. So I'll just kind of go over some of the things that, you know, we have done since we've been doing this. So anything that has to do with history, we're kind of trying to brand it with the VA 250. And the first thing that they did was the grand opening of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail interpretive center library, which Sally, oh, it's not, it's not Kelly, it's Sally at the Daniel, with the Wilderness Trail interpretive center. Anyway, Kelly, Sally Kelly. She has, she has worked tirelessly to go through all of those books that were donated to, to the center, and she has created a great library there, a reference library, and the books that were extra they sold. So, and then they named it after Mr. McConnell, so Bob McConnell, so he's been a long time, and he started on that board, I guess, in 1994 with my husband when they first started, so he has just been a great, wonderful asset to that group. We participated in the Gate City Jeep Jamboree, well, I sent my husband. He was the only one, you know, we, we kind of got started late, and he was the only one that was available to go that day and to tell people about what was going on with the Virginia 250. So he stayed and talked about as long as he felt like it, and then he went home. So, but he was there, he, he made the effort. We did do a parade, we did join in the parade this year, and I've got to see if I can get this to work, because, did any of you all come, did any of you all come to the, did you see?
Yes.
Okay. So, so you all, so you all know what happened at the very beginning of the parade? Do you mind, do I, do you mind if I show this?
No.
If I can figure it out? Uh, no. I'm not gonna be able to figure it out, so. Anyway, down here at the bottom, can you, can you see, Bill, if you can go down there?
Yeah, I can, I can play this one.
Okay, play that. You may turn it up. Oh, can you? So, that's one, that's one, that's one of Jeff's friends, and, so this was, this came, you know, this came from the group, and they were, we were talking about in the very beginning doing just a walking timeline, and I'm like, and, so, we ended up, you know, having a float and starting out with the Britisher Cove meeting and everything, and, and it was, you know, there, there weren't a lot of people there when I started up there that day, it was lightning in the background, and I think that scared a lot of people away. But hopefully we'll do that again. I mean, you know, I think it had some effect, and people kind of figured out what we were doing. And we did win second place, they won second place for their float that Jeff put together, together, and you can see, you have Betsy Ross sitting there, and they're signing, supposedly signing the Declaration of Independence, so, um, you know, every, you know, Jeff bought all of those, the majority of those costumes with his own money, um, because that's just kind of the way that we're working right now. Um, and we do have some other things upcoming, we're going to do a small tea party at the Harvest Moon Celebration on September twenty-third, mainly geared towards children, because the authentic tea party that we're doing at, um, the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail interpretive center on section of the thirtieth, is more geared towards adults. And so, we're just kind of introducing them to the concept of the Boston Tea Party and having tea parties and things like that. And then we will do the authentic tea party presented by Penny Mehdi, who, um, was an interpreter, a historian at Cumberland Gap. She's very knowledgeable about how you do this, and she has everything that is, um, to, to the time, to the era and everything. And then we'll do Christmas parades, um, we've talked about doing all of them this year, and we will probably add in Duffield Days. Um, we will have a group set up at Duffield Days to talk about the VA Two-Fifty and what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish. And we'll also discuss, um, you know, Daniel Boone and Rebecca coming into the area in seventeen seventy-three, and the massacre of their son, um, James in Stickleyville. So, we're just kind of trying to get the history started and let people know, leading up to twenty-twenty-six. That seems like a far off time away, but it's really not. Um, the Scott County events, we kind of started in May, the Carterfold reopened, as you all know, um, we had Scott County Chamberlain, and that was a great event, and of course, we, um, recognized, um, Mr. Fan and Kenny Fanon this year, and then shortly after that, our dear Joe Fuller passed away, so it's going to be kind of, you know, hard to lose all of those great icons. Um, did run the tunnel, the Gate City Jeep Jamboree. They have set that up to be a regular event for Memorial Day weekend in Gate City, and they're trying to work with the folks in Nicholsville so that, you know, so that, to get more participation and so that you don't, um, you know, so that you don't have, you know, people going to one event and not going to another, so that it's, you know, more cohesive throughout the county. And that's one of the things that we're really trying to work on with the VA Two-Fifty. Becky Bryant showed up last night from Nicholsville, she's joining us instead of Danny Dixon, so we're working on that. Had Nicholsville Days, I went to Nicholsville Days, I love to go to Nicholsville Days. And the best thing that they did at Nicholsville Days this year was, um, did a hot dog eating competition, and it was, I really thought that one of the little boys was going to be ill, but he kept it all together, and I was so proud. I had, I have a, I have a video, I have a video of that, but I was just waiting, "Come on, come on, come on."
Oh, no.
I mean, you know, so anyway, yes, but everyone was okay, so, you know.
How many did he eat?
They ate ten?
I think twelve was the winner.
Twelve, twelve was the winner, yeah. And most everybody was able to eat.
I believe I could have won that contest.
Uh-huh, I don't know, it was pretty hard.
It includes the bone.
Yeah, you had to eat the bone, which they ended up wetting them and.
Ooh, just wetting them?
Oh, that's how they do that.
Wetting.
They dip them in water, so they slide down.
They dip them in water, so.
Yeah, they dip them in water, so they slide down their throats.
Can't talk about it anymore.
If you watch that on, on.
It's very interesting.
That's how they do it.
So, and then, we went up to the Hainaut Music Festival, and that was a really nice event. It, it's always a really nice event on the mountain that day, I think it was like about sixty-four degrees, it couldn't have been a better day. And they had everybody's, um, signs were up, all of their sponsors, your all sponsorship was up and everything, so it was, it was a good day up there on the mountain.
Good turnout?
A good turnout, yeah. And Scott County Regional Horse Show, they had the Virginia State Championship here two weekends ago, so they had two nights of horse shows, um, did a nice job, they always do just an excellent job up there. I try, you know, I try to attend as many things as I possibly can, I could go to something, you know, every weekend, and if I wanted to, but sometimes I have to do stuff at home. Um, the, and then here is just more about the Red, White, and Blue Parade in Gate City. They had some, you know, really good floats and everything, you, like I said, you know, the crowd was down just a little bit, I think the little boy in the blue, I'm not real sure if people know what kind of expressions they're giving me when I take those pictures. And a lot, and a lot of times, I don't know what expressions I'm getting, because I can't really see until I get home, but he was like, you know, "Why are you doing that?" Um, and then, you know, that's just more of what they do downtown. That was the opening day for the Maple Tree Book Store and Coffee House. Has everyone been in there so far and had coffee and, um, bought books? They have a great book selection, and they're all used books, I mean, you can order some new books, they have a phenomenal children's section. The Wildwood on Jackson has rebranded, and she is doing, and that's where John Kilwarre's daughter is, with her son, they're sending them there to Wildwood at Jackson. Um, she's rebranded, and she's doing upscale consignment and luxury brands, so go in there and check that out. Um, we have, I went to the Hiltons Community Celebration this year, that was a great event. Um, I, the most, they had, they had at the end, they had, and, you know, of course, you all contributed to that, Jeff Arrington is, um, over that, and he and two of his friends are becoming licensed pyrotechnicians, pyrotechnics, I don't know exactly how you say that, but they did have one misfire, and it was so exciting. So, it was, it was the highlight of the evening, so, at least, it was.
It's a great event there, because even when people get out of church, and they come and they, they park in different areas, you know, we actually went, you know, this year as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, they do, you know, a great job.
They do do a great job, and they fed everybody, everybody had, you know, hot dog, I mean, those looked like, were those, were those pals' hot dogs? I don't know, but they looked, I mean, you know, they had hot dogs and chili and everything on them, so, and then Weber City had their Fourth Celebration, um, Doug Gannon had their Fourth of July Celebration, they always had a big day that day. Um, I stayed and judged the dog show this year, um, I generally do that, and, you know, they always, they always just have a good turnout. That was a very, very lucky parade this year. So, you were there, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, now we have some new Scott County businesses, and if you've looked at my Facebook page or on the website, you'll see that Sally Pete's Farmhouse has opened up as an Airbnb in Nicholsville. I thought maybe that she would have had, um, ribbon cutting, she'll have a ribbon cutting setting, but she has done, all of the folks, all of the Airbnb properties in this town, in this area, they are so different from each other, and everybody has taken their own little unique talents and abilities and everything, and just created something magical. I mean, um, Sally Pete's Farmhouse kind of reminds you of a, of a French chateau, a French country house, um, it's very nice, very, um, uh, just, I don't know, just beautiful. And she did, you know, all of the work, she's apparently an artist, but, um, of course, as a nurse, so, she's just very talented. And I guess, I guess her husband helped her too, Bruce, that's not really his name, is it?
That's Wendell.
Wendell, I always call him Bruce, there's a reason for that.
He looks like Bruce.
I thought it was Bruce one day, so.
Oh, my.
Um, yeah. And the Maple Tree Book Shop has opened up in Gate City, and, go by and check them out. And, let's see, of course, you know Devil's Fort Campground, she's here, and I think her first guests were from Italy and Spain, that whole little group right there, and she's put up those little barriers right there to keep, you know, kind of give them some more privacy and everything. I've not gone down there and done a story with her, nor sat down or anything, but I will do that soon. And then, I guess, one, this is just an incredible little story right here. Do you, you know Tammy Presley, that works next door, the young lady standing there in that photo is her dog, Veronica, and she's married to Oleg Kapachenko, and Oleg is from Crimea, he came here on a scholarship to UVA WIS to play tennis, and they met and got married, and they have started making freeze-dried candy, and it has taken off unbelievably. So, they started, they started in April, and I, I, I'm not going to tell you how much money that they've made, but they've cleared a significant amount of money, probably enough money that one of them can stay home and work on this full time. I don't think, I don't think there'll be Veronica, because she's Skopje tribe, so. So, um, so anyway, I've done a story on them, and I'm not quite finished with it, so I'll have that on the website soon, probably within the next few days. Um, some updates, Punggol Farms has turned into a full-time thing, they're doing all kinds of different things, they're open for family reunions, they're doing crack nights, she's growing flowers, she's doing all kinds of things. They have, um, crack night, they have a ladies' night out this week, this Friday night, if you want to go up and make a birdhouse and paint it, um, and then tomorrow, you can do it with your kids. The first event that they did was putt-putt at Punggol Farms with, um, with the Gillings have a portable putt-putt set that they take around to different events and everything around here. Um, Natural Tunnel has the only viewfinder in the Commonwealth that people who are colorblind can look through and see natural color. They did, um, a press conference up there to, not last week, maybe the week before last, and showed how it worked, and you can see a little reel on my Instagram page or also on my Facebook page as to the comments and the impressions of folks who were colorblind, because if you're not colorblind, you take being able to see regular color for granted. And, I mean, one of them, you know, just kind of stepped back from the viewfinder, and he said, "Do you all really see these colors every day?" And then, as an extra benefit, um, just special for them, the folks that participated in the press conference, the Incroga people gave them special glasses that they can take and wear, so that they can see without, um, you know, and see all of the colors, because people who are colorblind only see about ten percent of color, whereas we see millions of different spectrums and everything. So, I mean, it is a great addition to the park. Um, only one so far in the state in the Commonwealth. Creasen Kingdom Zoo, Cashton, that little girl was just a baby when I came here to work. I can remember going up there the first time I met them, and Mark was walking around holding her, because she couldn't walk yet, he was carrying her, and he had a bucket of grain, and she reached down and picked up a handful of grain and put it in her mouth and started eating it, and I said, "Mark, it's just, you know, it's just great, it's, it's fine." So, now she has her, she has her, she's grown up there on, at the zoo, and she has her own little TV show, it is a subscription TV series, but, um, you know, people to go and watch it, and she's just, she's just marvelous, it's just amazing. Um, upcoming events, uh, we have lots of things going on, Railroad Days at Natural Tunnel is this weekend, we do hope that they have a train, but it's doubtful, um, they haven't had a train, they didn't have a train last year, and I don't think they're going to have a train again this year. Um, there's also, on Sunday, they're having a special music event, the Lamp Light Theater is coming to the Amphitheater at six o'clock on Sunday, I don't have that up there. Um, we have, you can, you can see that Punggol Farms is having crack days, just all kinds of different things that are going on, um, throughout the year, through the end of the year. Um, the media that we have gotten is one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three to date. Um, social media, I do want to point something out to you all, we have about thirty-two thousand followers now. I posted this, I, you know, I hate to stand here and just down on BDOT, um, you know, I know that the folks come in and complain about BDOT, but this is ridiculous right here. Um, they've closed that swinging bridge right there at the end of my house on Angler's Way Road, and, I mean, I had gone by one day and they were working on it. And then, I think, we went to Knoxville, you can go to Knoxville that back way, and I came back home, and there was, that sign was up there, and I'm like, "Well, what kid has put that sign up there?" And, I mean, if, if you can see, you know, it, it's not very professional, Keith was like, "Oh, some kids put that up there," and he started to go take it down, and I'm like, "Wait, let me, let me check," and it is closed. And so, apparently, they started working on it, and it was passed, and then they came back, the inspector came back the next day, I called BDOT, and, um, it was closed due to structural issues down at the bottom. I have not seen them work on that bridge since before COVID. Uh, you know, I, I cannot tell you how many people have called me, um, so, this post right here had sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty impressions, it reached sixty-two thousand people with eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety-four comments throughout all of the shares. Um, that is bothersome and worrisome to people. I talked to, um, what's the little guy's name, the Congressman Griffiths office last, yeah, last time he was here, and I meant to say something to him this morning, and I forgot all about it, but, um, you know, I don't know what to do about trying to get that up, but my neighbor, well, the neighbor across the bridge, Patsy Winogar, said that she, that BDOT had called her and that it is going to be reopened, but, uh, she's told me that three weeks ago, and so far, it isn't open. Um, I don't know what to do, I mean, you know, does anybody, does anything work with BDOT?
No.
No. Shaming, nothing works with BDOT. So, I, that's not what I was to say, I'm sure, but, um, I don't know, I, I mean, I hate to see, and then, when Keith and I came through this weekend, there was a whole family standing there looking at that, thinking, you know, "Why is this closed?" And I didn't stop to tell them, so, it just kind of went on this time. But, and I'm trying, I keep trying to grow my Instagram followers. Can you, can you hit that little, can you plug? I've been trying to do more and more and more of those, every time I go to an event, I try to make a reel or try to make a story and post it, and, you know, just try to boost that up, because when I went to that little marketing class this, um, spring, summer, whenever I went, I guess it was this winter, um, they said that using those reels prompted, you know, more followers and everything, so we'll see how that goes. Um, my newsletter, the newsletter continues to be just an amazing little growth instrument for me. Um, I still get an open rate of about thirty percent on that, um, I share it on Facebook, people open it and look at it, um, so, and for right now, it is free. Now, if you go past a certain number of subscribers, you do have to pay for it, and if you want to do other kinds of things, you do have to pay for it, but for right now, I mean, I've been doing this for eleven years, and it's been effective and continues to grow and things. So, does anybody have any questions? I guess, am I supposed to tell you something?
I want the good news.
Well, it's kind, I mean, it's good, but it's, but it's kind of, I have to start crying. Um, you know, I was going to retire, this would have been, I mean, I would have been, I would have had like two weeks left, and that would have been it. Um, and I was, I mean, I was all set and ready to go, everything was done, my BRS was turned in, I signed up for my social security, it was ready to go, and then, my mom died. And, you know, uh, part of the reasons for retiring was, you know, I mean, she's older, and I wanted to spend time with her, so.
Bless her.
Then, sorry, I, after, you know, after that happened, I was like, "What am I going to do?" Then I started getting scared, and then I thought, "Oh, I want to go home." You know, you can't have, you can't have, you can't have too many closings all at the same time. So, you know, with her passing and then leaving here, it would have been very difficult for me, so if you don't care, I'll stay for a little longer. Sorry. Sorry. I didn't mean to cry.
Good job, man, you really have.
Thank you. Well, you know, it's kind of like one of those things that, you know, you have, you have to believe in your heart that everything happens for a reason.
Absolutely.
And you have to get up every day and ask God to put you where you're supposed to be.
Absolutely.
So, sorry. Oh, I don't like to cry. I don't like to cry.
Cry is good.
I know, but it gives me an headache. So, anyway. Okay, so I'm staying. If you have any questions, and there's my pencil.
Good presentation.
Thank you, so.
I'm glad you're staying.
I am too.
I enjoy your presentations.
Thank you, well.
You do a phenomenal job of promoting this county.
Thank you, well. Well, I like it.
I know you do. And it shows.
I do, I, I do like it. I like to talk a little bit, so, you know. Um, it's, you know, it's been good and, and, you know, I mean, I really was all set to go. I didn't apply for any grants, didn't really have anything upcoming or anything that I was going to do, but now I do. I've had some thoughts of what I'd like to do. One of them has to do with Scott General. He doesn't know that yet, though.
Oh, not now, right?
Yeah, he knows now, so, anyway, thank you all.
Great job.
Thank you, Pam.
All right. I'm sixteen. Comments, requests, recommendations on the board. Uh, no closed session, don't have anything there, so. Anyway, Mr. Tiff, have you anything?
Appreciate your staff. Enjoyed the presentations today and just a couple of things, uh, if you, if you order Highway, if you're taking notes for you tonight, I don't have the box number, but there's two, two areas that are very major when it comes to, um, the tiles under the road, they just bulk the pavement up. The first one is about, um, a mile and a half of the AP Quarter Highway from the routing mark, so it's pretty obvious. The second one is about an eighth of a mile before you get to the quarterfold. It goes all the way across the road, so it's pretty evident, all that. Vibrates vehicles, complains about knocking the front ends out of line and, and I said, I watched people dodging one and when people do that with a limited view, then there's a safety issue, so. And they've done this before on these, but, you know, it's temporary, it doesn't seem to last, so I'm not sure what they have with them. That's all I think.
Appreciate what everybody does. You know, what Pam was talking about, about the, these bridges, you know, I have to, I know we have to have our priorities, you know, I'm sure VDOT has theirs, sometimes we question those priorities. But, uh, you know, there's a lot of swinging bridges throughout our county and I'm sure a lot of them, if not all of them, will end up like that, you know. I, I, I'd hate to lose those. You know, we've got low water bridges, uh, you know, and it takes an act of Congress, literally, to move something from one of those drain tiles that goes underneath it and it's, they're just, they're going down to E L T. There's just a lot of things that, that we have that, that we're going to lose if something's not done about it. Uh, you know, but, uh, you know, she, she, she wrote up a good, good point. One, one thing, I mentioned to Freda a few weeks ago, uh, our, our main bridges, uh, like, you know, they done, redone the one in, on seventy-one before you get into Nicholsville, you know, they, they dedicated that bridge to a war veteran. Uh, but when they redone that bridge, they never put the name of Copper Creek back on that bridge. And if you'll notice, a lot of these bridges, when, when something's done to them, they're not putting that name back on them. You know, I, I think that's important. You know, the sign should be somewhere. Uh, why not, you know, there's, there's somewhere to put that on there. Uh, I, I noticed the one at, at the end and when we, when, when they, uh, put Mr. Collins' name on it, they did, the name Clint Rivers not on. You know, I, I, and I don't remember if it was there before that or not, but, uh, that's, that's something they need to look into and they, because if that's lost, you know, a generation down the road, they will not even know what that is, you know, so. But anyway, that's not a big deal. Like I say, they're priorities. I know, but I, I, I think that's, that's important.
Mr. Brick, this morning Danny and Freda and I sent one out to Lenoir-Wisco to a ribbon cutting for a fiber optic broadband situation. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about it. It's for high-speed broadband access to LEED WISE in Scott County. This will include ten thousand nine hundred eighty-two residential persons, homes. When they complete this, there will be universal broadband coverage. It will be over ninety-five to ninety-seven percent of LEED WISE in Scott Counties, which is, is great. The Virginia Department of Housing and Community Developments was there and they gave twenty-two million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety thousand five hundred dollars. Total funding was twenty-eight million five hundred forty-five thousand. But Bill Franklin, over the years, has been instrumental in writing grants and getting, getting all this money back to Lenoir-Wisco area and Southwest Virginia. So we need to, uh, really appreciate Scott County Telephone and Bill Franklin.
Do you have anything? Thank you.
You don't have anything?
No.
Is that it?
I have the, just thank everybody for everything that they've done. We've had a few meetings the last couple of weeks, it seems like it's been a break. So I appreciate all that they do and, uh, everything. I do have one quick question. The seating area there before the train trussel down here, is that VDOT? It's like the, where the picnic tables and things like that, is that VDOT?
I can tell you all about that.
Really? I'm just curious about that because it looks like it.
I, I got a call this baseball about that, that there was trash down there and in the cans because we closed down the receptacles down there at the Moxon Gap. So I got in touch with VDOT and VDOT came and took the trash cans. Trash and trash cans, that's the reason there's no trash cans. Well, that doesn't belong to Scott County, to Gate City or it doesn't belong to Weber City. It's, it's VDOT's. And Fred, you correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the last roadside park in the state of Virginia. And the trees fell, I complained about trees when we went to Richmond in January. And, uh, they started cutting trees, believe it or not. Then we had the windstorm that knocked more down. And those are still there. So that's more like we've heard all day, VDOT.
Well, somebody had asked me about it is when I was...
Gate City, I was before the Gate City Town Council, the last, their last meeting over two other things. And I mentioned that to them and they have started another park down here up on, up closer to Gate City on the ride where the gazebo is. I think they need more picnic tables there and maybe plant some trees and that is in Gate City and they would take better care of it if they would just do that. But the one down there, I've tried. There's a deal with VDOT, it's like pulling teeth yourself.
Pulling your auntie, right?
Yes.
I don't even need to know.
Anything else?
That's an eyesore down there.
It is, and that was the comment.
It is an eyesore.
And I said, well, I don't rightly know exactly who is responsible for that, so, okay.
I attended at Lenoir-Wisco ribbon cutting down there too and that announcement, a lot coming into Southwest Virginia. Uh, thing about the phone company, um, they have been a good partner with Scott County back when they built the animal shelter. It's going to cost a lot to get the power to it and they set the poles and stuff and they, and they just, they done it, didn't have to, but they did, saved the county a lot of money getting power stuff through it. They were willing to do that. So they've been a good partner with the county for a long time on doing things that nobody would notice or pays their attention to. So, anyway, they're serving all those counties and even into Tennessee and they've served the same in Russell County, Dixon County, the, you know, getting broadband too. So it's with that many, with those three counties, that many connections, that's going to be a, a good shot in the arm for people. And he mentioned about people teleworking, it's, it's growing, people, more and more are teleworking. It's going to give them the opportunity to do that with at least ten mags, I think he said of service. I got five and Doug Gannon works pretty good, but can't be better. We're getting fiber optic, it's there now, it's going to get hooked up, it's, it's ready to go. Uh, anyway, one more thing, there's rumors out about moving, let's move into the Teletext building at Weber City. It ain't happening. It ain't going to happen. So I hear these things and I don't know where these rumors get started, but it's not...
The Teletext building?
Yeah. So, it's not happening. It's not going to happen. But anyway, those rumors are out there and people are saying that and, but they, maybe for whatever reason, they get mileage out of it, whatever their thoughts or agenda might be to do that, but we're staying here, we're not moving. And so just to quell those rumors, I hope that's what I've done and, and it's not going to happen. We're, thank you for staying here. All right, next meeting, off the second, I think. Everybody ready for it? Thanks staff, Fred, all I've done, good business this year, fast with a new business we here, new things happening and I think we've done well, June thirtieth, ending everything and we, we're up to snuggle and everything. Thank y'all for watching. Anything else before I gavel sound? All right, meeting is dismissed, see you off the second at eight-thirty a.m.
I'll be here in a minute.
All right.